...
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God and the vision of liberty and justice for all.
Father, we just ask that you be with us today as we carry on the business of county. First got our action, we got our tongue, so Father, we just ask you to be with us on the way. As we try to do the best we can, and just say we pray.
Anybody else want to say anything before we get started?
Yeah, I got something to say.
All right.
I want to find out what I can take my car to shop at and have the air conditioner bringing on up.
I don't know.
Open the gun public out there.
I can't answer that, sir.
I didn't figure it out.
I think we have addressed that before we leave. I think I know what you mean.
Okay.
I do too, but I don't have my authority. If I did, I'd tell you.
Well, I know what my answer would be.
What is?
Fire.
Huh?
A fire, that's what that's my answer would be.
That ain't what you asked me. You asked me when you carry your car.
That's right. Well, if he takes it, I should be able to take mine.
Yeah, I done tried. Anybody else?
Public hearing, is that going to be in the agenda?
What's that?
The public hearing.
Public hearing?
Yeah.
Or, or which one?
It's a public hearing, now it's going to change the law.
Oh, yeah, sure. It's on the agenda.
Yeah, but it's in, it's within the agenda. I thought it was supposed to be separate from the general.
No, well, it's on the agenda last session.
Yes, sir, sure.
I tried to get on the agenda, but I was a little bit late on getting there, so we decided I'd do it at this point.
Okay.
I need to, uh, what I come, come for y'all night about is, um, back on April the 10th, I put in, uh, the paperwork here in y'all's office to, for a salary change on my 911 director. That didn't happen. So, went back on May the 4th and done another letter, uh, explaining this out again, for the salary increase for my 911 director. God, Mr. Lewis gave him this information. And the money's there in my budget to make the change. And it hadn't happened yet, and I would like to know why.
So, to the board, we had talked about the sheriff's petition, and I think Deputy Falk was here before to talk about the 911 director. As you know, Fire Chief Wood had asked that we make a, sort of a procedural change so that we would have the right representation on our documents relative to how 911 is handled in the county at this time. Uh, the sheriff, um, took that as a, as an opportunity to, to make a change in his organization to create a director position. We have not established any additional requirements for the office now that would warrant there being a change at this time. Uh, one of the things that we're looking at as part of our overall strategic plan is upgrades in a number of different systems that would mean that we would have to make some changes to accommodate that. And we talked about short-term things that we want to get done and what things we would want to do over the longer term. This 911 change situation for us is likely to be a six to 12-month window before we are even at a point where we would make a significant change, where it may even have any impact on the workload. Now sheriff was talking about what he has in his budget now relative to the salary adjustment that he believes the difference would be, I think as Colonel Falk had talked about the last time, in the difference between the compensation that is received now and the compensation that the director would receive with the change. Those numbers are in conflict with what we show on our end from a payroll standpoint as to what the salary is currently for, uh, the 911 supervisor, I guess he is at this point. So, the difference that the sheriff is talking about, we haven't been able to validate that that number isn't larger than that. So, that's the first thing. So sheriff has mentioned that making that change he has in his budget this year to accommodate that. Well, there's two challenges with that. If the board makes a decision to accept that change and the elevation in the organization, then he may be able to compensate for that difference now. But that creates an obligation in 2019 for the board to look at a budget allocation for the sheriff department increase because he would have changed the level of another, uh, employee in his organization. Right now, as we look at the run rate through the year, sheriff with overtime, which of course right now has not even, it was not even budgeted by the board, is going to be close, and if anything happens, it's likely to have an overrun on his budget for salaries. As I look at another line item, say for insurance, he's already 50% of that through April, and then, and at our current rate is going to be well past his number, and we may have to make budget adjustments to even compensate for that. So, these small incremental changes on top of a shortfall that we received in our notification from the Department of Revenue makes it challenging for us to make an advance change and accelerate this piece of the longer-term strat plan to accommodate this interest. And, and, and we think that it is probably something we need to look at longer term, but in the financial situation where we are, we just aren't in a position to fund that at this time or to make an obligation. Now, we're going to look at it maybe for the 19 budget to determine whether or not we can support it, and if it fits into the 19 strategy, then I think that's a reasonable thing to do. But to vote on it now and to make a decision and to create a commitment for us when we're in a, a pretty unfamiliar territory right now, I think would not be advisable.
Well, the thing is, oh, excuse me, Jack, go ahead. Let's back up. The board made a decision to give my employee the title of 911 director while I was not even here and knew nothing about it, and found out about it when I got back here two days later that this had been done. That's my employee, the sheriff's office employee. The money's in my budget to give her the increase for the workload that she's taken on, which she's been doing without any increase in pay. Number one, you don't have the authority to give my employees any kind of a title without consulting me about it. Had you consulted me about it, I could have told you the other part of it. But that wasn't done. Now, it is a very good recommendation that was made by Mr. Wood because you've got, this county has to have that person with that title if you're going to be moving forward, applying for grants with the Amnest Service, EMA, and trying to build what he's trying to build. You have to have the person in place that has that title and that responsibility. So, it does need to be. That is a, a great recommendation by Mr. Wood.
Did you come in on May the 4th? You said you came in on May the 4th with that?
Uh, May the, uh, 10th, uh, excuse me, April the 10th and then May the 4th.
Well, I'm sorry, Mr. Wood.
But, anyway, I lost my train of thought. But you have to have, that person has to be in place if you're going to be getting any kind of grants and things of that nature. The county needs this person. Now, you have a 911 fund. You should, which is used the same as like the jail, jail fund for staff and construction and operation to do, deal with 911. I've not asked the board to amend my budget. I've not asked the board to step in and pay that part of her salary out of that fund, which you can legally and should do. I have it in my budget, and it is my employee, and I intend to give her the pay increase to go along with the responsibilities that she's taken on. You don't have any idea what she's taking. We just got done with our yearly GCIC audit that we have to go through every year that pertains 60% of it through 911 with GCIC and all of that stuff. You have to have this person in place.
That person, for that person in place is benefiting the county, or we can get grants, right?
The county has to have this person in place, yes. If you don't have somebody with this title, that those folks in Atlanta can say, let me speak to the director, you're not getting nothing because they have nobody to talk to. Now, to give somebody this responsibility to say, we're going to put this on you, therefore you got somebody to throw under the bus when it all goes wrong, without giving them the compensation, is wrong.
You already got the money that's in the budget.
The money's in my budget, we already have this.
You ain't got asked for no increase in the.
I'm not asking, I'm not asking.
Is his employee that'll pay?
Commissioner, just a couple of things on the front end. We didn't make a decision to elevate the sheriff's employee. I had a conversation with Chief Wood about it when I came to the board and said that he had had a conversation with, um, with the, the pending director, and just like Chief Wood came to me for me to come to you to say, this is really just going to be a, a, um, a title in kind as a representation.
No, so I think the way, the way it was put was title only, and that is no way to do anybody. Mr. Wood is here. He's the one that told me about it two days after it was done, and he told me that it was officially done, and he's already, he had already told, told my employees.
It was explained very well by your assistant, Mr. Falk, last meeting. Uh, so, I am saying, and at this point, I make the motion that we approve the request.
I second it, and let's back pay too. If it's in his budget, it's just benefiting for the county.
Yeah, because we can, we can get, we can get in, and we can get and be qualified to bring in more funds, but you're not qualified. They aren't going to even consider you to be.
In the long run, on the, on the other benefit for the county financially, what this does as well is she becomes an exempt employee. She's not entitled to overtime, comp time, none of that. Once she, she is, her rank is equal to a captain. She supervises seven dispatches, and she's responsible for what he needs on his side of the house.
Which is attorney. Do we need to vote on this? Does he know what he's moving and letting?
This is already done.
It's in his budget. He's got the money. It's his employee. We don't have any say for him anyhow.
Nope.
So, just.
Go ahead and do it together.
I'll give this again, or Chief Falk will, to Frances tomorrow, man, so she can.
And that goes back pay to when she first took that position.
And that was, would have been April the 10th.
That's right.
That's good enough.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Is that E dispatcher down here? That's what we're talking about, that guy?
Yeah. E?
If I have.
No, sir, that's, that's something different. That's something different, yes, sir. That's something different.
Chairman.
Okay.
Mr. Commissioner Vaughn made a motion and a second, and you did not call for a vote.
We don't have to vote.
We don't have to vote on that. It's already been done.
You don't have to draw that much.
That's already dead.
Well, um.
But you think since we've made the motion and said that we need to vote just for. You need to withdraw.
Don't withdraw it.
You need to.
I withdraw it. You're right.
Anybody else before we get started?
I just want to comment on something that went on last, uh, meeting, the tax assessors. You know, they wanted a, they got a $13,000 for equipment so they can watch, uh, they can look at properties on live time, you know? And we said, we asked them, couldn't, did they, uh, couldn't they notify the property owners? That, you know, they said they had a gate, you know, some property they couldn't go on, but they needed this to help them do their job. And, uh, we asked them, couldn't they notify property owners? We, uh, we do, you know? It's on the website. Here's, here's what the website says. It says anytime during hours, they can, uh, if you see them out there, they're there. That's about what it said. It's not letting anybody know we're going to be there. And, uh, I mean, all it takes is a stamp. Like, because they're going to send a tax bill or something, but, I mean, what they're wanting, they can get it off a picture. They don't have to have it lifetime. If they think a building's there, you know, they're not throwing it up in the day, they're not taking it down in the day most time. I mean, they take the money, but it's on the picture. They send a bill, and then they have to pay for the appeal. That's why they did me. They came to my property and, uh, just come up, they don't want to go, you know, avalor means what somebody's willing to pay for a property. That's what it starts off at. It's what somebody's willing to pay for and you're willing to accept. When they found out we bought that property, first thing they did was overdouble the value of what we, we bought it for. And then when we come to appeal it, they, uh, they had come up with this rule that any utility pole that was there, we count them up and give them a 1,200, over $1,200 value to each pole. Everybody.
Utility pole? You talking about light poles?
Yeah, on, this is on a trailer park day, you know? It's a special rule for a trailer park. Uh, I had told them that was 18 lots. You know, just conversation with, uh, Mr. Fitcher was there, and, uh, she just, she overheard it. Didn't even speak to them. Didn't say, hey, nothing. And, uh, so that's why she, she jumped up the value on, out, off, for 18 poles, but it wasn't even 18 poles. When we, when we appealed it, I said, how did you get?
Who we talking about?
Huh?
When you say she, who we talking about?
Ramona.
Ramona, yeah, that's right. Anyhow, we got into appeal process, and next I, I mean, she told me she counted the poles. There's a road right up the middle of it. There's nothing holding back on that property to see what's there. And, I mean, she just, uh, no honesty don't have to be in the policy, don't seem like. I mean, I think government ought to be honest.
Let me ask you this. You said that when you appealed it, what happened?
We went to the board of equalization, and they, anything she said was law, just like that. I mean, and y'all giving her power.
Were, were you appealing here to us?
No, because, uh, that's not your, that's not your thing. I'm just saying, you're giving them more, y'all giving them more power, and they're not, uh, they don't.
I brought, uh, uh, I appealed my taxes here.
Did you win?
Yes.
We didn't give them any power.
Yes, I did win. They charged me for the two years.
But they're not, they, it ain't just for one reason. They go, they're not, uh, honest with, with their intentions.
Shouldn't he be addressing the board of, uh?
There's nobody, there are the laws when it comes to taxes.
I'm not sure.
I just said, they didn't need no $13,000 to live view people on a product.
That's what he's.
A picture, a picture didn't happen.
The approval of the equipment that apparently was made for the purchase, he's not really talking about what happened, or he's trying, trying to appeal something that happened a year or two ago. He's talking about, I guess his public comment is, I don't think y'all should have allowed her to do that.
No, we went to court with her, because she may as have to take it all the way to court, because, and, uh, we won. We happened to win because it is the law. They didn't care about that law. You know, they sit here and say that, uh, this is the law. We got, we got the right to go in people's houses if we want to. You know, I mean, there ought to be a harness on this somewhere.
Yeah, but that's state law. We can't handle state law. But I want to go back. I want to go back to something. Now, in 2006, I believe it was, I came before this board and made a presentation. They increased my taxes and all of the properties that my family owned by 600%. When I talked with the assessors, I got it down to 300%. Well, that was still, my God, so I came to this board, which was the next step, made an appeal.
I did that too.
They reversed it. They reversed it. But what they did, it's a two-year limit, I think, on there. By the time they got kicking me off, that time period had expired. But they set it back where it was supposed to be. But the taxes that I had paid on that period of two years, they took that from me. And I have the, the results of that. In fact, in, in the last meeting or a month ago, I presented the results of that. I got it from the tax assessor's office. Presented it here to Mr., my friend here. And they carried it back to where it was supposed to be. And their problem was when they, they took it from the map of the flower. You see, when you fly away, it's only two-dimensional, not third-dimensional. And what they saw, a clay pit that had not been reclaimed, because all pits do before 72, you don't have to reclaim them. So what they saw with the two-dimensional was a nice, beautiful pond. And it wasn't a pond. It was a clay pit, 400 feet deep.
But while, while I was appealing, I did come to the board first, and I said I wouldn't.
You gotta go to them first. The board is the last place you go before you go to court. You can come here.
Well, that ain't in the process. That's not in the process. Anyhow, while we was appealing, she asked how many poles we had, and I said, uh, I forget the number. It was 14, I think. Anyhow, I, I was counting the well. And so whatever number was, she, she added that to it, and then I was saying, are you, are you going to, on the well too? The, I mean, wells already got value. All sets of things got value. And they said they're just going to put a value on, call it pole hookups. And then, when I, she put that number down, and then when I, I figured it out, and I, it was one too many. She wasn't even going to, uh, go to, back to the other ones. She'd have to wait till next year when she goes out there. And, uh, I'm just saying, the law, the law, the word is law.
Do you mind giving me your name, address, and your phone number, and I might, if I look into it for you?
Well, I got it straightened out.
Oh, you did?
From now. I got it straightened back. I'm just saying, I ought to be honest to you and give you.
What, what are you saying that we ought to do?
What, what you, what's right with us is that we bought the equipment.
I'm just saying I ought to be honest to you and give you.
Well, what, what do you recommend we do?
And I'm talking, uh, I want to bring up the, the land ordinance. I mean, you got, uh, if you got an unoperative vehicle, you charge with a misdemeanor and file, uh, I mean, anything, I don't, I don't know. I forget the word, but if you're non-compliant, non-compliant on anything, you're charged with a misdemeanor and you get $500 fine each day. You know, that's kind of tough. I mean, when do we start going to war on citizens, you know, I mean, if you got a vehicle in the yard or something, you know?
The vehicle's in the yard, not.
If it's, if it's a non-operative vehicle and you don't have a tag or insurance on it, it's illegal. You're, you're a committed misdemeanor, as far as the way I read it. You know, anything that's, that's don't meet the land ordinance.
Do you, and, and we do that here. I mean, our, the county does that. Are you saying the county?
It's in the land and the ordinance.
It says in order for nobody, nobody's done that.
Nobody's done it. That's what the problem is. But, yeah, one day, all this stuff's going to be taken literally. Grand, don't say anything about granddad in this one. You know, he might be dead now. They could have and say, you know, come ask. And who can afford a $500 fine?
In the big counties, you like, what, Fulton County and all that, that may happen up there, but you won't have to worry about happening.
But it's in the books. It's law. When it's, it's written down. It's law.
What no more than says? You got the number?
No, you look in the, uh, front of your thing, the glossary or whatever, and it'll tell you right back to that page.
You got a copy of that thing in there?
We'll look at it.
I, 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 I mean, I said, y'all need to lighten up. Like I said, there used to be 10,000 residents in this county, and now there's 8,000. Land ordinance ain't helping.
No.
I mean, uh, if somebody puts a porch on that, on a house and didn't get a permit and all, I mean, they come, they get tear down, you know? We could have a little more freedom. This ain't making with 156,000 people, you know, in the Air Force Base. This country.
Yeah, I got.
You know, all the greatest country.
I got you.
But, you know, I know times change.
I know, but I got a big problem with.
But, I mean, can you, you go with that ordinance and, uh, kind of lighten up somewhere, file a plea.
We'll take a look at it. Anything else?
No, that's it. Thanks.
Appreciate it. Anybody else?
I want to address out about the, uh, the things that happened here last week with, uh, the administrator taking his mother's car to the road shop to get it serviced, air conditioning. I want to know where he thinks $20 is enough for them to service it. Number one, he shouldn't have done it start with. Now, I got about 100 people who want to take theirs over there, and I can give you their names if you want them. I mean, if we're going to give the taxpayer dollars away, do it to the taxpayers, not just the administrator. And in your handbook, if you look at it, it says, anytime you spend taxpayer dollars for your own use, that's an automatic termination. State law says if you misuse taxpayer dollars, it can be a prison term. But I don't see how you can allow someone to pay back something they've already stolen, because that's still in taxpayer dollars.
We will address that tonight.
Well, I'm telling you, I have 100 cars in front of that truck shop ready to be serviced. And I'm also going to the Secretary of State and the Attorney General. So, that's all I got to say too.
Good, thank you.
Anybody else? All right. Here we go. Foundation of Tweeds County website, ma'am, that's you? April Moss? Come on up and show us what you got, ma'am.
So, I'm April Moss with the Regional Commission. Um, the commissioner has actually texted, well, asked us to do a new revamped, um, website for Tweeds County. And what I am here today to do is to show you guys what the proposed look will look like. Um, right now, it's still on our development site. Um, if everything is approved, then you guys can have a new website as soon as this Friday. So, of course, this is your old website, um, and this will be the new look. So, when you first come to the site, of course, you have a nice slider, and it lets everyone that comes, um, to the site know that this is Tweeds County. Um, it's very visual, um, it's very updated. It is also mobile-friendly, so if you go to like a, um, a cell phone or a tablet, it's going to scroll down and it's going to fit whichever object that you're actually using. So scrolling back up to the top, you have your information. You have your contact information. All of that will always be at the top. You have your information about your meetings. Um, if I click on this information, which I'll do later, it'll actually take you to more information about that, um, commissioner meeting. Um, you have your easy-to-navigate navigation. You have your new logo for Tweeds County. So say for instance, if I drop down with the new government tab and clicked on your minutes and agendas, um, this would be very easy for anyone to find. Give it a few moments. So once I come to that page, it automatically shows me my agendas. Um, what I would have to do is just click on which agenda that I want, and it would take me to a PDF of that particular agenda. Same thing with the minutes. If I click on those minutes, it's going to link out to a actual PDF of those minutes. Um, anytime that you're on the website and you click on anything, what it will do is open up in a new menu so you don't lose the website itself. Going back to the homepage.
You need to change that to permission. Tweeds County.
Okay. Going back to your homepage, you have just a little welcome information. Um, over to your left-hand side, you have all of your upcoming events. Upcoming events can be any of your minutes. It can be anything that's going on in the county. Um, and they will always be to your left-hand side. Also, on your left-hand. Um, and they will always be to your left-hand side. Also, on your left-hand side, you'll have all of your recent news. Um, at the bottom, you have a footer that will be at every page. It's gonna have your contact information, it's gonna have your recent news, upcoming events. And it's gonna have all of the links that are important to you guys. And again, at the bottom, you have your same navigation that you have at the top. That way, you don't automatically have to go back to the top to, um, get to that information. Or if you wanted to go back to the pop top, just hit that button, it'll take you back to the top. Uh, say for instance, for any of your departments, you have a department tab for each department. Once you click on it, it's gonna give you more information about that particular department. Um, who the appraiser, the chief appraiser, director, you're gonna have their staff, their contact us information, and more information about that particular department. Um, you still will also have your upcoming events and your posts on the page as well. You will have a search button that will search throughout your whole website. Um, so if I was looking for the next council meeting, if I put in council meetings, it's gonna pull up everything about council meetings. Um, you have a news, you have a news page, so anything that I post on my website that's news related, you'll have a page that's just gonna have all of your news there. Um, if this is an article that I wanna read, I will click on it. And it will take me to a full article about that particular information. And that is pretty much in a nutshell.
Let me ask you this. Do you have pictures of certain, I see, I saw the Cayman. Do you have pictures of the actual operations of some of these mining groups? Or can they be put on there?
Yes, sir. Any pictures can be put on the website. Any pictures that's on this slider, um, can be put here, just whatever you guys want up there. Right now, um, a lot of the pictures are placeholders, just like for some of the, um, directors, you see placeholders there. Um, oh, not that one. So it's just a placeholder, but once, um, we set a date, then we will actually come up and do pictures for those particular, department heads or whomever, and actually get them put up for also.
I'm referencing pictures in the county, like some of the mining operation. There are some beautiful pictures of things that. Could you actually put those up?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Bond. They're trying to get the layout settled. The content is up to y'all. Anything you wanna add later? They're, they're more worried about how things are organized.
I see, I see.
My question was how would we get the, I, I noticed that you had like the minutes on there. How do we know that the minutes are secure? Can't be altered or anything like that?
Because the minutes will go up from, um, I would assume Ms. Kathy would be doing those, they will be a PDF. Um, so it goes up as a PDF. Um, now, if they have, you know, like Adobe or some, Adobe, and they go in and just alter it, then yes. But still at the same time, they can't go to the website and alter anything. Um, there's only, um, whomever you guys deem have access to the backend of this website. They will be the only ones that can actually go up and put up those, um, particular minutes. Also, I'll have backups in my office that I always do, like weekly. So if there's a discretion or anything, I always have backups that you guys can go to.
So that'd be like a super user, is what we call it in our, our world, um, as far as that goes, it will be.
I, I will always be the super user. You will always have people that's in your office that will have access to the backend of the website. But they won't have access to like any of the backups or anything. I, I'm the only one that has access to that. Unless you guys deem that, hey, I want you to do, um, backups with all of the information in the database and send it to me. That's, you know, a call for you guys.
That's my main concern is somebody altering minutes, um.
No, they, they won't be able to, to do that. And then also on the backend, I still have, um, security protocols, so, I mean, it's not like, um, if you don't, if I don't give you access to the site, you can't get to it unless you're just a hacker. But at the same time, I still have security protocols to try to keep that from happening.
There would be a place under there, under the, I don't know where you are, under the government of the agenda, for someone to see the county code?
Yes. If, if you guys, anything.
Get that on the website.
Yes, sir. Anything that you guys wanna add to this is, is totally.
That's one thing we would, and I could get you that. I could either scan it and send it to you, or I could bring it to you, wha- whatever you would prefer.
Oh, scanning is fine.
Because we need to have that on there.
Isn't it on MUNI code?
It, it is, but I'd like to feel to have it right there.
Not just a link to their website?
So you wanna have the actual, um, document there instead of.
That would be, to me, if I was a citizen, it would be easier to just click on that right there and see what the code says.
Okay.
You know?
Whatever works for you guys works for me.
That's good.
So there's not really a limit off MUNI. I think right now, our county code is about eight hundred pages.
No, no problem.
Okay, right, okay.
Any more questions this lady? Anyone else, ma'am?
No, sir.
It looks great, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you.
You're welcome.
Did we need to approve it or what? No, I think it's all we've got to prove.
We just want to, we just want the okay to move forward.
Move forward.
All right.
Yeah.
Yeah. So moved.
You have a second?
Yep.
How you vote?
Yes, yes. I thought you were gonna approve it. I think we just wanna make sure that, uh, that there's any kind of material change that you need to rest and discuss it, so, so we, we got that.
If, I mean, if, if it, if you guys need me, what I can do is send all of, um, the councilmen the, the link to the development site. Um, you guys can go through and look at it just to make sure you're happy with it. Um, if you need me to do that.
I can send that out to the maple.
Okay.
Yeah. We'll, we'll talk about it if there's something that the commissioners want. And, and we always have the opportunity to update it, you know, commissioners, if the things that, that occur, that you want to have to change or to update. And as we go through these different, um, processes and updating procedures, we'll wanna go back and make those structural changes, so we had a little.
April, do you think it'd be, you'd get, you'd like on a USB drive? Cause I don't know if I can email, if you have the page.
Um, do you have your?
I have it, but I hate it.
Okay.
You may have, you may already have access to most of it. I think Laura has. Your guys updated a good piece of that for us, so she may already have it in the office. So check and see what they have, and then let us know, and then we'll fill in the gaps.
Okay. But, I mean, but if not, then whatever works for you.
It would be hard to get you a, you know, a thumb drive.
Okay, whatever works for you, works for me.
Cause I don't wanna send it to you fifty pages at a time.
Thank you, ma'am. Revolution changed time on second few fifty meeting, forward meeting, six P M.
So you, you recall that several months ago, uh, we were at the second meeting for the evening set of a seven P M. Uh, board, um, made an approval to do a pilot for a couple of months at the six P M timeframe to see if that would be equally as appealing, um, relative to the time access, so that if we could get things started a little bit earlier, then it would be easier to not go so late and be such, uh, and have such a taxing burden on the citizens who would travel down to the meeting. So we've had an opportunity to be at six. I think you've been able to see that our census and the audiences remain, uh, high. I, I venture to say that we've had greater attendance, um, than we've had before over the course of the process. But I guess the question now before you is what do we do on an ongoing basis? And so, um, so certainly it would be the recommendation that we make that change to six o'clock versus seven o'clock, and just want you to have a discussion about it, to see what would be your pleasure there.
I'd rather stand at six and.
Okay.
Good job.
There's a lot of daylight out there. Um, I, I'm gonna abstain from that.
I, um.
Ask me.
I'm sorry, you see.
I'm done, sir.
Thank you. Um, back, I don't know, in the eighties, I think, uh, we were meeting at nine o'clock in the morning. And meeting one, meeting a month, nine in the morning. And we weren't getting much participation. So, I think, I, I pushed it, I, I made the motion that we have an evening meeting, so that people who work in the mornings could have an opportunity to come and sit and, and issue their grievances. You know? And we came up with the seven o'clock, um, idea. Due to the fact a lot, most people get off work eight to four. I know that's what our system was. Uh, some people that actually work in people, then people who are in administration at the company they work with, they get off at five. And a lot of times, people go home, they change clothes. So we set it seven o'clock in the evening, in order they have plenty of time to do what extra thing they have to do and still get here. So that was my, uh, position on keeping it seven o'clock in the evening. And, uh, I'm gonna stay with that. That's gonna be my position. We go seven o'clock and stay there. Give people enough time to, cause we need as much attention as we can.
All right, I agree with Lana, I'll stay at six. You wanna make a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion to stay at six, that's second.
How you vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. No, I'm staying.
One, two, three, yes or no?
Looks like we do have a better crowd, so.
I disagree, naturally. A better, a good crowd, everybody say crowd. Look, we have had, there are certain issues that draw people out. We have had this courtroom.
Grass is good in the park.
Yes, sir. So last, at the last, um, meeting, we had discussed the lawn care service, uh, proposal that had been submitted by D L W Lawn cares. We were talking about maintaining, um, the landscape in the four parks around the county. Uh, several people had expressed some interest to bid. We had a couple of bids, one that was withdrawn. Uh, D L W made their submission. So the board had requested that we run an ad in the paper for a week and give an opportunity for some other, um, companies to bid. So the ad was run, uh, and we got one additional, uh, bid. Now, as you see in front of you, those two bids, uh, just, the only caveat there is that, um, the second bid, uh, the bidder, uh, did have privy to the, the information on the first bid. Uh, so you'll find those prices to be relatively, uh, the same. And so, um, I think what we, what we're still looking at is probably relatively the same amount of money, uh, for the two, uh, services. Um, D L W, again, is certainly the, the contractor that works with the board of, of, um, uh, the school board, and they are doing a number of different properties around, uh, the county now. Um, you know, Commissioner Dubois, you may wanna speak to a little bit of, of the capability of Dane Land. I'm not familiar with them, but you may be able to share with the board a little bit of, uh, feedback around their capability. Uh, he's a local landscaper.
Does a good job.
He does do a good job. He, uh, um, lives right here in the county, and, uh, I thought it would be a good opportunity to use local business. Tell them about it.
Where, where you having?
Right, Hammet Park.
Hammet.
Hammet Park. Right, so they got the. I'm sorry?
They don't need to cut that.
Okay, well, they gave an individual park quote, so anytime you wanted eliminated, so say in the future you decide you wanted it cut, we already have a price on it.
All these trees growing up there where these bush hogging, or the cannons need to do that with people.
Right.
These trees, they need to do that.
Okay, so that's a start. I just, you know, since everybody was talking about it and wanting to get equal opportunities across the county, just ask for them to give an individual bid on each of those properties, and then you can make a decision either to do them all at one time, any, um, whatever, whatever your pleasure was, you know, based upon it. So I, I think there certainly is a much more attractive opportu- option than have to spend tens of thousands of dollars to get an equipment and then have to staff it, when we could have somebody really hit it on an app, as needed basis. Commissioner?
Um, I kinda, I started this kind of words, I own this kind of words. But I, I have been thinking about it, uh, uh, at one time, I'm, I think Mr. Bond can help me on that. We have people in the community that live close to those parks, maintain those parks. And, uh, we, and I think they paid them on, uh, as need basis. And, uh, my thought is, I, I, I would like to go back to that. And that's still, that's still keeping money in the county. We, uh, each commissioner will tell that person when they, uh, will want that part cut or need to be cut. And, uh, I think, I think we probably, I think that we need to go back. And I think we can get both jobs, leave one of these to you. Is that a motion, Mister? Mister Ford?
County attorney, uh, just as a process, uh, is it, um, is it okay for us to take that approach? Uh, just as a, just as a, you know, legal clarification, that's all.
I, I would prefer us not to do that.
I, I agree.
One, one being that, um, you know, something happened to them, if they ran out the road or, or hurt somebody.
Cut your foot with a lawnmower?
Those would be, those would be some prob, that, that would be problematic for us, you know, and not saying that anybody would ever intentionally do it, but if somebody gets their foot cut off, or a rock slings and hits somebody's child in the eye, they're gonna be looking to hold somebody responsible.
Or hit say, uh, automobile coming by, bust the wound.
And hopefully it wouldn't be anything, it would hopefully be more like that. And then with, with a commercial company, that commercial company under our standard contract would have to have liability insurance that would cover us. I think that in the end, uh, probably the chances of those things happening are pretty slim, and so in the end, Commissioner Ford probably would be saving us money. But if one of those bad things really did happen, we might look back and say, you know what, that's why there are not as many kids going around with lawnmowers and we're cutting grass like I used to when I was a little kid. And now there's commercial companies doing it. Uh, that would be my concern from a, from a liability standpoint.
We could. And that happens too. Now, my wife, about ten, fifteen, twenty years ago, I thought that one of you come and pay taxes, and cut the grass. Bronco took that body twice, or rock took it out.
And it could still happen, I mean, just as easy with one of these guys on a scag mower, but they have inj. They're gonna have provided a certificate of insurance, showing that they have insurance.
Do both of you guys have insurance?
D L W.
They've been with us, they got to have insurance.
I don't, I don't know. I don't know. Well, we can certainly, I mean, we, we can clarify. He does, okay.
He, he ha, I mean, you know, he, he would have, he would need to, he's gonna be in compliance with our standard contract.
Well, with that being said, uh, I probably want, wanna go with N County. I'm gonna N County.
Okay, all right. And, and certainly what I can do is that if the board votes to approve that, we'll go through the process, make sure that they have their insurance. And if they don't have it, and they're willing to get it, then we'll make sure that we continue the process. If they do not, then we'll, we will, uh, we'll come back to you.
Right.
For, uh, for an adjusted decision. We need to do something quick though, cause it's raining a lot.
Well, I'm on grass up there now, so, I mean, shit. I mean, you know, you know, they have an event, they have an event Saturday. And, uh, it tried to do as well, but you know, a mower, a, uh, residential mower would does better, you know.
Well, we may likely be able to get someone to take some action on that between, before the weekend. If you all vote for an approval here tonight, I can re, you know, we can reach out right away to whoever it is, make sure the insurance is there, and then we can move.
Well, I plan on doing it tomorrow, so if y'all don't stop me, I'm gonna.
Oh, okay.
I'll take it on me.
We'll take that up personally.
He has, he has signed a pledge.
He's on a pledge, okay. Alright, good deal. Okay. Alright, so Mr. Chairman.
Can we take a vote on which one of these want?
Uh, local.
N County.
E County.
Dane?
Some move, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second.
Second.
Alright. Got a motion to approve Mr. Dane's proposal? I'll second.
How you move? Yes.
Yes.
You asking unanimous?
Nah, I'm going to stay and continue the labor.
Oh, okay, so we've got four, four yeses.
No, I mean, you.
Yeah, I was playing.
Alright, so we're gonna have three yeses and two extensions, okay? Alright, well, that's, that's certainly enough there, okay? Very good. Okay. Alright, very good, okay.
Alright.
Alright, so we got.
The Freeport Resolution.
Alright, so the board had, had, um, had been approached about Freeport, which it, uh, gives consideration around the ad valoring taxually to businesses. So back in two thousand and three, there was a referendum that was put in front of the voters, it was approved. The board had approved for the exemptions to occur. However, the resolution did not get drafted. We received a communication from, uh, the state relative to that, indicating that they were missing the document. So this resolution really is just the board now just taking the approval adoption, uh, approach. Just so that we can, um, finalize this vote and action that was taken by the citizens and the board at the time back in two thousand and three.
Wait a minute now, do we have an option of backing out of it? We didn't approve it, no?
Yeah, you approved it, that they, the commissioners approved it, in the minutes, we have the minutes for that, and.
In two thousand and four.
In two thousand and three, was when it was done, and then the, it, uh, the voters approved it September the sixteenth of two thousand and three on a referendum. So we got all the right approval, we just.
We didn't got no show.
No, sir, we just didn't get the resolution drafted, so that it is officially on record.
For the public info, for the public information, give a briefing on what, what, what it does.
Okay, so this particular, uh, Freeport action, I'll tell you, there are three different categories. There's an inventory of goods and process of manufacturing or production, you know, shall be set at a hundred percent, meaning that they would get an exemption for that. The category two would be inventory of the finished goods manufactured or produced within the state in the ordinary course of the taxpayers' manufacturing or production business. When held by the original manufacturer or producer of such finished goods shall be set at a hundred percent, and we're talking about companies like Caton. And then, of course, the third one would be the inventory of the finished goods, which on January first are stored in a warehouse dock or wharf. Whether public or private, and which are destined for shipment to a final destination outside this state. An inventory of finished goods which are shipped into the state from outside this state and stored for transshipment to a final destination outside this state. Should also be at a hundred percent, so, so that's really what it is covering. And, and so that referendum was put in front of the citizens, they approved it, the board approved it at the time. They just did not act on and create the resolution, which is certainly what we would normally do, and so we just need to create the resolution right now.
Now, the date that they are talking about.
Yes, sir.
When that takes place, is what, what date?
Well, it is already in.
Uh, no, 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 go back.
January first, two thousand and four.
Yes.
I understand that, I understand that, what I'm asking, the date that the taxation takes place in that resolution, what is the date of that, January, is it January?
Well, well.
I'm not talking about that, Mr. Chairman.
Well, the referendum was two thousand and three, the inaction was January one of two thousand and four, the adoption in this resolution will be tonight because.
I understand that, I, no, 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 I'm not asking about that.
What, what are you asking?
Go to the, uh, what date, alright, the first of the year.
It said the referendum.
Yes, sir, January one.
Was held on September sixteenth, two thousand and three.
Yes, sir, come on, come on.
Give me, give me the resolution, I had it here just a moment ago, I'll explain when I say, thank you very much.
There's three days on there.
Right.
Wait just a minute, I get it now.
Yes, sir.
I would. I mean, it's already in effect, there's nothing we can do about it.
I, I'm not talking about, but I know it's in effect, what I, here's what I. I'm not talking about the citizens voting or anything, but please let me tell you what I'm trying to get over to the public. It says this, inventory of finished goods which on January first that are stored inside that warehouse, are stored in the warehouse dock and whatever finished goods. Shall be set at a hundred percent. What it's saying is this, that when your people go in, go in and evaluate property. The machinery and everything else, that if on January first. Say people have warehouses that produce kale, and they could have tons and tons of it there. They can get it on January first. And tax that product at a hundred percent of its value. The only thing I'm gonna tell you about it, it's got the date on, and here's the game of it. When you go in on January first, that's the day, you're not gonna find any stored material, they're gone.
That's why they have after Christmas sales.
Oh, my God, you're missing what I, well.
They go, they, all of them. Mr. Dubois, I've worked in chalk line for twenty-five years.
I did for thirty-one years.
I know that's what they done, they, they liquidated their inventory before January first, where they wouldn't have to pay taxes on it.
There you go.
That, that's not just a chalk line, that's.
Everybody do it.
Ain't nothing they can do about that, but.
Well, it, it.
That's not what I just said.
No, you said Christmas.
That's what he talked about, Christmas Eve.
So what, what I'm saying is that that possibility might come to you again, and you understand what the game is. That's all I'm saying. That Freeport, that's just exempting them from taxes, aren't they?
That's right.
Exactly, it, it quotes here with the tie and the limit, and that's what it does, you hit just the point I was trying to get on, thank you, that's all, let's move on.
But some, like, we're gonna draw, you gonna draw, draw that document?
Well, the document is, is already drawn, we just need for you to approve it, so, and then, and then the Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, so move.
Alright, so good, okay.
Yes, I'll second.
Yes.
Alright, unanimous?
Unanimous.
Yes, okay.
We want.
Okay.
Alrighty. This dispatchers.
Alright.
Commissioner, this is, uh, e-dispatch, we've tried this out for, um, thirty days, what it is, is an app on the phone, it works the same as a analog pager. We don't get credit for it, like we would a analog pagers for ISO, but it's a whole lot cheaper than us trying to buy analog paging system. Um, analog pagers is anywhere between four to five hundred dollars a piece, plus you charge, that includes your charge and everything, plus the system, and our regular system won't uphold that dispatch, um, side. Um, we also, we currently have a, the nine-one-one, um, dispatches that comes out soon as, uh, they key it into the CAD, but you have to sign up for those, and there's only certain dispatches that you will receive on your telephone. Uh, e-dispatch, what it allows us to do is to give the dispatch whatever information we need to dispatch over that. I need to call all of my firefighters and say, hey, look, we got massive trees down, four ladyhead, whatever, I can push that out, or Jennifer, um, at nine-one-one, she can push that information out as well. That's one group, and everybody, everybody's dispatches gets it. Whipps County has it, um, their guys sign on with us with it, um, so all of our mutual aid and automatic aid, we're having with, um, Whipps County and Allentown. They're automatically getting the dispatches at the exact same time we do, it helps cut out that time limit, but us having to go to their dispatch system and have them individually dispatched as well, because usually, um, within the last thirty days, those trucks has already been rolling and headed to our scenes, um, where we needed an amount of manpower before their dispatch actually ever got it up. Um, it's a hundred seventy-nine dollars a month, that's for a hundred members, we can downscale it if we need to, right now I got sixty-two members on it, and possibly add some more. Um, we can go up on that membership too if we need to, there is no contract whatsoever on it, period. Um, anytime we don't want it, we can send it back, they'll refund whatever money that we had used, they, um, bill in six month increments. The first six months increment, um, bills due up now is a thousand seventy-four dollars, for six months. Um, also, there's a one-time setup fee of a hundred and ninety-nine dollars, this bill is twelve seventy-three. Um, the yearly rate, and I will put it in my budget for next year, is twenty-one forty-eight for a year. And, um, that's what we're kinda looking at, it's a good system, um, we have it in Lawrence, that's the only thing I carry with me, because everybody has a cellphone. And I carry my cellphone with me and never miss a, um, page, I don't even carry my analog pager with me anymore, so, because, put radio on, analog pager on, you look like, you know.
You had mentioned something about ISO, um.
I, I assume, I assume, and I, I, I argued with him at this point on it, ISO will give us credit for, they give us credit for our, um, pages and our radios that we have. They will give us credit for our, um, analog pagers, like I was just going through, our radio power is the same as what our radios are as far as dropping our ratings down. Won't give us credit for the e-dispatch, asked them why, I said, well, your phone might be dead. I said, well, my analog pager I carry in Lawrence County is dead now. Well, the tire about to go down. Well, if the tire goes down on the telephone, then the tire's gonna go down on the radio, and I still aren't gonna be able to dispatch people out, so.
Right.
We, they had to come around to the e-dispatch system yet, but eventually I hope it will, will hurt them down a little bit, but the cost of going with this versus the cost of getting some, a few ISO points is not worth the difference in the major costs of doing a analog paging system versus this system.
How many of your firefighters are still, or don't have a smartphone, I guess?
If this page is over smartphone, landline, whatever phone you actually got, so once, when I put your telephone number in, it'll call your, um, hash phone. So you pick it up and it goes to voicemail, it'll send you out a text message, or it actually displays on fours, voicemails with time.
What color you like, the color back in the day?
So even if you don't have a smartphone, it does on the cell phones as well.
I, I think he's already answered this, my question was.
Wait a minute, last week I give a rule that they told me to make, that unless you stating something at the beginning and at the end, don't interrupt us when we discussing something, don't bother. Alright?
Uh, first, I'll see you, Adam asked some questions.
Yeah, no, I wanted to tell you that I was at, uh, District Four Fire Station, tell the guy that does a good job cleaning, I appreciate it.
Yes.
Cooks more, I don't have work to find me.
Alright.
Alright. So I like to do a thing to me, I like to tell.
If you wanna see, I got it on my phone, if y'all wanna see the app.
Just recall any kind of phone, home phone, cell phone, no matter the.
So Twigs, get roots.
Yes, that's, the phone works, ain't gonna lie. So.
The flip is red.
That's this one. It was just, when they was watching these, when they opened up the steam, or he took farms off, so it was. So it's cool. And you can stop it at any time, you can replay it at any time, that way you got your directions and everything there, you can change your tone settings, um.
Does that actually keep the record of it?
Yes.
So, okay, well, you can go back if you need to.
Yes, sir, you can go back if you need to, and also on their website, you can go back through and look at what all calls we've had and actually pull that up as well, and you can do that without having an app or whatever, just go to their website, search in Twigs County, and then start getting the calls that we've had.
Five hundred and seventy-four plus one ninety-nine?
Yes, sir, maybe every six months, and I say next year.
Twelve hundred and seventy-three dollars.
Some move, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, and I say for the year, it'd be twenty-one forty-eight, sir.
Got a motion to approve, you got a second, how you move?
Yes.
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 All of them, Mr. Dubois?
Yes.
Unanimous?
And Black Bottom, the Black Bottom Water System that was on mine too, they, uh, had, um, the paperwork was showing that we didn't have, um, adequate enough pump up there, two hundred fifty gallons per minute GPM pump. Um, since then, we found out this afternoon, that upgrade actually was done in twenty fifteen, they just didn't send us the right paperwork. So that company that done that upgrade is gonna send us the documentation tomorrow, um, emailing, we'll push that on out to ISO, and we'll actually get those ratings that we need at Black Bottom off that two hundred fifty gallon pump.
We're gonna get the rating dropped?
Yes, we're gonna get them dropped, to a what extent, I don't know, but we gonna do real good on our ISO rate, we do real.
How about the other places?
Um, the Black Bottom, the, um, General Twigs, that was substantial, and as well as, um, industrial. So all of those ratings come in real good on ISO and everything, and they was very good places. So we just, we're doing now the numbers and getting everything together to, um.
They give you a ballpark issue?
They said between, looking at maybe seven in some areas, nine's gonna be in some, ten's gonna be in place on the outside areas as well. But, um, hopefully around seven, getting a little bit better, so it's kinda vague about it, but, um, we're gonna do.
What is, um, what is Allentown's ISO, you know, it's a four?
Yes.
And Blackland?
Uh, that I don't know.
Okay.
That I don't know, but Allentown's a four. Um, we actually got credit for, um, Allentown's water system, Danville's water system, um, Maconville's water system, Maconville just went, entire county just went to a one.
Well, that would be awesome. Ezra said Blackland's seven, so if we could get some, some of our stuff at seven, that'd be good.
Yes, and like I said, we pulled off Allentown's water system as well, Derek Danville's, and we got credit for, um, Maconville's.
So we have five mile radius of Danville?
Within a thousand foot of that hydrant there, but it goes within a five mile radius. They got a crazy calculation how they figure it out, do you have to have property within the last thousand foot of the existing water system to get credit for the county? Then there's a different formula they use to how much credit they extend that out to where that rating.
So how, how is this affecting, uh, this city of Jones? That's another question?
Yes, sir, we'll talk after.
Doing a great job, Jerry.
Thanks, sir.
Yes. So, Black Bottom, more so, make the.
Use that.
Yep.
Yep.
Change July eighteen, board of commissioners, make it to the tenth, July the tenth, and July the twenty-fourth.
Alright, so similar to what we had in the month of May, you know, when we came back from ACCG, to give us an opportunity, uh, for the staff to have time to prepare for the meeting. Um, we made those adjustments to the second and the fourth Tuesdays for the month of May. In July, the first meeting would occur on July the third, which is the day before the fourth, which we typically have a lot of people, uh, or people on vacation or desirous of doing so, citizens as well as, um, staff. So, we're asking that the board make that adjustment in July and move the first meeting to July the tenth, and the second meeting to the twenty-fourth. Which would then put us right back on schedule for the August, first meeting in August to be on August the seventh. So that's what we're asking, that way, don't complicate things with the holidays, gives, gives staff plenty of time to get ready for the, uh, the meeting first meeting in July, as well as the second.
Make a motion, move on that. Alright. Got a motion to approve and second? Moving the meeting from the July the tenth and the twenty-fourth. Alright, in discussion, how you move?
Yes.
Yes.
No.
No?
I don't know.
Okay.
I can't get along with anybody today, I just. July fourth, July fourth, that's the only holiday you get.
Four yeses, and then. Okay. Alright, very good.
Alright, how many yeses we got?
We got four, four yeses.
Yeah, four yeses, one.
One no, yes, sir, got it.
So, um, are y'all, are you, are we giving the county a holiday?
No, no, we're moving now, our meeting. Just moving our meeting.
Just moving our meeting to. To give them that time to approve, don't think it's gonna be awful.
Just moving our meeting to here instead of there. It's gonna be here and here for the month, hopefully there and there, that's the only thing that's changed, just moving the meeting, that's all. Not, not increasing any time off, unless people already have time, which, number of people are scheduled already, so just move it, just shifting the dates a little.
Just like we did last month.
And this month, month. Okay, I agree with it. So you're a no?
I'm a no.
Okay, alright, very good, got it recorded, okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright, planning is on.
Alright, so we, um, we're having to hear, have we, there's been a request made, uh, to have a property out on the, in the ninety-six car in the industrial park. And the request had been made to rezone that to residential, um. And the request had been made to rezone that to residential um agriculture. As Mr. Petrie here tonight uh to uh give his position relative to his request for that rezoning.
Are you ready for me?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, come here. State your name and.
Randy, Randy Petrie.
Brandon?
Randy.
Randy, okay. Yeah.
And I jointly own some property with Roy Malone. I inherited half interest from me and my brother and sister.
Into that Roy Malone property? Is that on the Bullard Road and?
Uh-uh. It's right across from uh Federal House.
So that with the uh industrial park there?
Correct, that's authority.
Oh, okay, okay. Mr. Malone, that name stand out for something. Oh, yeah, okay, yeah.
Well, they bought it from him and my dad. Back in two thousand six. Some, somehow, our property got zoned commercial. We didn't request for it to be zoned commercial and I didn't know till we had it in the COVA Conservation Use Program. Which expired end of last year.
Well, isn't it commercial sitting there?
It was, it was zoned commercial uh to the board and we, and I shared that with Mr. Petrie. That the, that Mr. Malone had petitioned the board to approve this property as commercial. We had that discussion.
Oh, not, not the entire property. He owns ten acres where he, he dug dirt. And he had it petitioned about three years ago.
So here's, here's the notice on the hearing that took place. It was zoned commercial because the request was made for the commercial piece to a car. So Mr. Malone had made that request, you know, I, I've been, worked pretty extensively with the staff as well as Attorney Howe. And we deduced after going back and looking through the records that it, that the request had been made and approved to be.
Oh, is that the?
Commercial property.
Is that the two thousand two article? Oh. Well, that. That uh seven hundred acres turned into ten and a half and seven point seven acres.
But it's connected to that other larger piece?
Oh, no, I'm thinking. Uh let me explain this. Roy was my partner. Was interested in putting some billboards up back in two thousand two. And I'm sure he asked the administrator and planned a zoning, what he needed to do. First, they put an article in the paper uh stating fifty acres and six hundred and fifty-four acres. Which is about what him and my dad owned in two thousand two. That was requesting for it to be rezoned. Uh Kathy went, faxed me, I assumed it got rezoned until a couple of weeks ago and Kathy faxed me the minutes. Of the later meetings. And on. February the fifth meeting. Vice Chairman Parks made a motion to table the issue until the advertising of the proposal was clarified. And all it got zoned was. Ten point five acres and seven point seven acres, not six hundred and fifty.
Have you looked at it, Mr. Attorney?
We looked at it, it seems like about two months ago, and really Ramona did a lot of work and, and really got down into the details of it. And uh submitted some information to us and it was very obvious from what she provided to us that the whole. It wasn't just ten acres or seven acres. I mean, it was a large tract of land had been requested to be approved commercial and was approved commercial. And zoned commercial. And that's what was done and that's what was approved.
I never saw, but the minutes never said it was approved, the six hundred fifty-five. It says they redid the, if you wanna look at this.
I, I mean, I, I, I remember seeing what, what Ramona sent to me and it, and it was, it was very conclusive and I, and then I, I don't know how long it's been. It's probably been six weeks or eight weeks.
Oh, yeah. And I assumed the article was correct.
Right.
Until a couple of weeks ago, I thought, I just wanted to see what happened during the meeting.
And I was pretty sure that Ramona had talked to you about that and provided all the information to you as well. And then my understanding was you said, well, I'm gonna go in and ask for rezoning of that, of that property. And that is what I thought you were doing here today. You've advertised for the rezoning as opposed to coming here and trying to convince us that the property was never zoned in the first place. Because those are two different things. If you're here to try to have the board in its discretion decide whether or not to change the zoning of the property, that's one thing. And that's what I, that's what I understand that the public noticed and the public was on notice to be here tonight for. Versus, I think there's been something that was done wrong in the past that's some sort of inadvertent zoning placed on this piece of property. It was only supposed to be ten acres or seven acres. That is not what I think is properly before this board tonight. What is properly before the board tonight is what was noticed and that was your application to try to rezone this large tract from what it's.
From commercial to.
To whatever he's asked.
To RA.
Now, that's what I think is before, properly before us tonight.
That's correct.
To consider.
That is correct.
So now I'll just share that with you, Mr. Petrie. That, that would be my position and that's what I think is, is the only thing that is properly to be decided here tonight.
Right.
But I, I mean. Has it been taxed commercial?
Well, with the COVA has its own taxing system. It isn't.
Well, the property can be zoned commercial and still qualify for COVA.
And, and I thought, based on the information that I had, and I'm sorry, I'm foggy on this, but it's been two months. But I thought when this information was presented to you, you said, that's fine, there's, I'm gonna be trying to rezon that property.
Correct. And I assumed the article.
No, no, sorry. To me, what that means is, okay, I know that this property is com- is commercial.
Well, I just went by the.
I'll start, I'll start the process of obtaining a new zoning for it, okay? So that's, that's what you've been doing, in my opinion, through Monty and the others at the plan, is zoning, that's what's advertised. That's what you need to be trying to convince this Board of Commissioners of is why this property should, the zoning should be changed from commercial to, what, what are, what are you asking?
Resident. Resident agriculture.
That's, to me, that's what, that's the issue at hand.
And that's a huge difference.
It is a huge.
But I'm saying, like I said, I just thought, I saw the article and I thought, well, that's the smoking gun. Till two weeks ago and I thought, let me just see what happened during these dates. And Kathy faxed it to me.
Right. I, 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 I don't see it as a smoking gun. I see it as if you want to start a different kind of process than what you've been traveling under, then you need to do that. But I, I believe what, what you're here tonight, what is properly before this, this board as the first, as the only flood people that can change the zoning in Twigs County. Is why your property ought to be changed to uh residential from its current zoning. That's been reflected on the maps for years and years and years and taxed as commercial, why it should be changed to residential. Mr. Petrie, that's.
Well, because these seven hundred fifty acres never got, from reading the minutes.
And, and is that?
And I think.
Is that your only argument?
Well, I think what happened, uh I went back when we sold the five hundred acres in two thousand six. They rezoned it in two thousand seven. And the application says uh zoned residential agricultural. I've got all this here. Sorry.
But, but, but see, my position, Mr. Petrie, is when this board designates a piece of property as, as, as commercial or residential or whatever it is, okay? That is a decision that this board has made in its legislative function, okay? And all this happened before we were here.
Correct.
And, and that sticks on that piece of property until this board again decides in its legislative discretion to change that zone. So for, if, if, if it's your position here tonight, that what I'm gonna try to do is convince them that this legislation decision that was made years ago. Was made mistakenly or erroneously or illegally, that is a different kind of a presentation than what we hear for tonight. What we hear for tonight is to hear evidence from you and your, and your positions to this board, why we need to change it from commercial to residential.
Because it was a clerical error.
And, and that is your only position, correct?
Well, I mean, I've got proof that only ten and a half acres is seven point seven acres.
But do you have any, do you have any presentation to make to the board about?
And the five hundred acres, the.
Right.
Development Authority that we sold them.
Okay, well, let me.
Says currently zoned as residential agricultural.
Yeah, and, 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 and whatever's on that application has nothing to do with what the legislation description was and what's been on the ordinance. But do you have any presentation or arguments that you want to present to the board about why they should change the zoning, other than?
It was clerical error.
Other than that, do you have anything else to present to them?
Well, this Albatama says containing fifty acres and then containing six hundred fifty-four acres point seven.
Correct.
That's what they advertised to change from area culture to commercial.
And I, I took that as the gospel till I read the minutes after that.
Well, the, would the hearing have minutes?
Probably not, but.
Yeah. The commission's meetings do, but the hearing is just an approval or disapproval.
And see, even if, I mean, the, the law even on this issue is even if a clerical, a, a mistake is made, okay? And, and someone comes in and, and makes a presentation to, usually it's a plan and zoning, right? And, 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 and that commission makes a decision, I am zoning this piece of property a particular way, okay? That is the way it is zoned. And the only way to unzone that is to go through the process and have it corrected, okay? That, when, when the Plan and Zoning Commission makes that decision. That is different than a clerical error, which might happen back here when some assistant. Meant to do one twenty-two Field Springs Road as residential and they did one seventy-two, okay? That is a clerical error that can be corrected pretty easily. But that is not a let, because the, the deciding authority never made the decision to zone. One seventy-two Phil Stone a different way, okay? So your property has, has been legislatively decided to be commercial. The only way to change that is to convince this legislative body.
But only because, and I don't think it was due to the article, I think when they mapped the five hundred acres. Which in the, it says it's zoned, in two thousand seven it was zoned agricultural.
Right, and see, every time that that zoning map is approved by this board to be the zoning map of Twigs County. It, it sort of stamps that property again. This is what's commercial, this is what's residential, this is what's this and this is what's that. So I really thought, based on, and, and, and you and I never talked and I wish that we had, but based on the.
Well, like, I didn't realize this till a couple of weeks ago when.
Right.
She sent me the minutes and I just assumed that we'd applied and it.
I, I, I'm not mad at you.
Oh, yeah.
I'm just saying this is.
Well, me neither.
Right, yeah. I mean, I'm just saying this is the, what, what has happened. I mean, I really thought you were gonna come in here tonight and put up evidence as to why my, the best and proper use of my property is residential, why that's the highest.
Well, we're growing pine trees.
Yeah, that's the kind of stuff I think that we were all prepared to hear, as opposed to, you know, in two thousand and two, my dad's partner. Did this and then it turned into this and then it got this and we think all that was mistaken and confusing. You know, that happened back when people that are no longer here, Mr. Bond accepted, um was here. And so that's why, you know, it's, it's my opinion, you need to be talking to them about what's the highest and best use of your property. And why you think your property should be residential and not commercial. And I, I'm not, I won't waste your time saying that again, but that is my opinion.
We're growing pine trees, but Mr. Lewis, did you say, cause they told me to get back in the COVA program, it cannot be commercial?
I think that is correct.
Well, I think that they.
Or did you just say?
Well, I think that, that you'll have to look at it. There may be instances where you may be able to, to qualify there and you'll have to talk to the tax assessor.
Well, they were and they emailed the teacher.
And if, yeah, and if they say that you can, then you can. If they say, I'm, I'm not the authority on the assessor's side. But what I will say is that I know that you and, we had a very clear discussion about this property and it being zoned commercial. And you said, okay, well, he did that, then that's where we are. And then we've been running down the track with you.
Yeah.
Running ad and all of that so that the board could hear this petition from you tonight to rezone it from commercial to RA. And I think what Attorney Howe was saying is that if you wanna take a different approach, you have to date that approach at a later time. You can't do that tonight because that's not what is on the agenda and what has not been published to the public as what is being heard tonight relative to the property.
But, but I'm not trying to stop you from making your, as a fact, I'm inviting you. I'm asking you. If you have arguments that you want this board to consider and vote on tonight to make that change, please make them.
Cause it's already on the agenda.
Right.
So you got that shot now.
Yeah.
Well, I'm.
You can make it outside of what you thought.
You might win. You might lose. We don't know, but you gotta give them something.
Well, clarify one thing.
Yes, sir.
That Albatama, that's a fifty acres plus six hundred and something acres.
Mm-hmm, correct.
That's correct.
On this, on this Albatama right here, you're talking about the property is currently zoned general commercial, C two zoning district and requesting by area culture. This property contains.
Oh, and all we've got left is a hundred and eight acres.
A hundred and eight acres.
Hundred and eight.
What happened, what happened to the lot?
We sold seventy-nine up under Academy Sports.
Okay.
Sold five hundred to Development Authority.
Okay. Where is this property located? What, what much long sold the dirt?
Wrapped, wrapped around it.
Wrapped all the way around it, where the big vines are.
Correct.
And all you got left at a hundred and eight point fifteen.
Correct.
That was the.
And everything else, everything else around it is commercial, right? Everything is commercial there.
Road goes through.
Right? Everything is commercial there?
Yeah.
Okay, so everything in that sector is commercial.
Or industrial.
Or industrial.
And the, and the new, and the new map overlay.
Yeah.
That will be up, to be approved here at our next meeting is um commercial.
That is correct. That is.
That, that doesn't mean it's got to stay commercial, I just want everybody to know that.
And.
That's right.
It's been that way for years.
That is correct.
And I think what happened, the description on, when they zoned the five hundred acres, didn't have a map number, just said. The property is currently on Twigs County and is located between Highway ninety-six and Ellendale Route. Ours is between ninety-six and Ellendale. Larry's, three acres is adjacent to the five hundred acres and told me. In February, I didn't think of it till last week and called him, that his guy, attempting to rezone his.
I, I didn't even check on it. I hadn't even looked at it. I'm sure.
What did yours on?
I don't know what mine is on. I haven't checked on it.
It's adjacent to the, that's property?
Adjacent to the five hundred acres.
I got.
And ours is adjacent on the other side of the five hundred acre.
But, but it's not adjacent to a hundred and eight. Everything around it commercial.
Yeah, a hundred and eight is touching the five hundred.
Everything is.
It is on the other side of the five hundred.
Yep.
And it's got a road running through.
Who wants five hundred?
Mr. Mr. Petrie, is the, I mean, and, and you don't have to answer this question if you feel uncomfortable.
Oh, well.
Is, is the main reason you want this zoning changed so that you can get your COVA Conservation credit back? Is that, is that the reason?
To get back in the program, alright.
That's the reason.
Would, would be a big tax relief.
That's correct.
Correct.
You, you don't wanna build a subdivision or develop homes, whatever. You just would like to get your tax savings back.
Correct. Well, we, it expired, our first ten years expired.
I mean, that, that's.
The end of last year.
Isn't that kind of where we are?
Well, yeah, uh he has all the authority in the world to come back to the Tax Assessor's Office and apply to put this land back in conservation and they gotta prove it the first of year. He can do it. The property he's talking about is already run out. It was ten years and it run out, so. Except for one property and that property is T one oh four oh ninety-eight.
Well, Mr. Fitcher, I, I was looking at you, but I, I, you probably thought that meant I wanted you to say something. I did, I appreciate that.
Supposed to be a public key, but it's all one side, go ahead.
There, you're on.
The industrial property is on.
IG, industrial general.
Is that basis sign of being is commercial?
No, so, industrial means that there are specific types of businesses that can be located on that. Commercial is more like a filling station, a gas station, restaurant, a fast food, a hotel that's already adjacent to that property. Those are commercial businesses, and ours at the end of that road is where you could put a factory or warehouse, or something heavier than just a house or a store.
All the business on the other side of ninety-six is a walk.
Commercial.
Meat place, commercial.
Commercial.
Cow place up there, commercial.
Commercial.
How about the motel, commercial?
Commercial.
But I'm saying, is the clerical error, if it's better for me to just fight the clerical error in the next meeting? Because I've got proof it was a clerical, I have no proof, the article said he was applying, and then later in here it said they rewarded the.
Do you want to withdraw your motion to rezone now, or do you want, or do you have other evidence?
Well, if y'all vote, then I have waited six months, correct? I read that somewhere. Because the tax assessor, the deadline to getting back in the COO was the first, and she said, you can appeal it forty-five days after the assessments go out, which go out this week, which will be six months.
My question is, do you want to withdraw your request before the board tonight?
I think so.
Okay, so.
Unless y'all could tell me how you're gonna vote.
That would be, that would be improper, and they would do that against my advice. But my question to you, Mr. Petrie, though, is, is, is do you want to withdraw your, your request before the board to have your property rezone from commercial to residential?
Well, you should go forward with it tonight.
Or do you want to go forward and have this board vote on it? Because we're about at that point.
Well, I mean, it's.
To make a decision, right?
Don't make one yet, but if it's a wrong decision, you gotta wait six months, which will.
Well, I can't tell you what the decision's gonna be now, but.
Yeah, the poker face.
Let me, let me ask you something, now.
Yes, sir. I mean, it may be better, like, my evidence is it was a clerical error, that it was, we did not zone it ourselves.
That's evidence for another day.
Sir?
It's evidence for another day.
But you were letting Mr. Roy act on your behalf at the time, two thousand two and two thousand three?
Only on my dad's behalf, yep. Correct, and they had both powers of attorney, so. But I'm knowing Roy, I'm that, he was, he was, I think this was something to do with the billboards that never came, and I'm sure he said, what do I need to do? And they filled out the application, they never read it. Because then later on, like I said, they changed in the minutes.
Uh huh.
It says.
Okay, what you want me to do?
Well, how quickly could I come back? That up to?
Plan and zoning. You would, you would need to go back and talk to them, talk to Monty, and start the process, but, you know, if you withdrew, then there wouldn't be any possibility of there being a six-month bar. But if you don't go forward tonight, you won't find out if you convinced the board to change your zoning or not, which would solve all your problems. I mean, I'm not about to give you legal advice, because that would be improper, I'm just kind of, we're at the point now where we, we need to make a motion.
But you will be the one with my evidence, you're the lawyer, correct?
I, that's, yes, I am.
Never introduced me as the lawyer.
Yeah, but, 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 but I don't make the decision.
Oh, yeah, I don't mean the zoning part, but if my next fight is, here's my evidence that we did not rezone. Or do I have to convince the lawyer first, or do you give me advice, like?
No, I won't give you advice.
I mean, like saying, he did go back to two thousand six, to the minutes, to make sure we didn't rezone it, but.
Yeah. I mean, I would, I would take a look at the things that the county asked me to do, and I presume that Mr. Lewis and the board would ask me to take a look at it, and I would provide them the opinion based on what I see then.
Yeah.
I'm not gonna base any opinions based on what, what anybody tells me until then, and then we would have to make a decision about what to do then, Mr. Petrie. I mean, I'm really not trying to be clever.
Oh, yeah, but I understand your, yeah.
Trying to.
Like I said, I do not think.
One way or the other, I'm trying to be as fair to you as I would want to be if the roles were reversed.
Oh, yeah.
What you want me to say?
Well, I mean, I've got, to me, combining evidence that it was just clerical error by the minutes, and so I'll drop it.
You're gonna drop it?
I'll drop it. By the way, how would y'all look? I don't know.
Alright.
But can I bring it? Your planning and zoning?
This follows with Monty tomorrow.
Okay.
And that.
Or when you're ready, I should say.
Okay, yeah.
When you're ready.
That point, we'll have another year, you're right.
Well, that.
Or do I wait till?
That depends on him.
Yeah, I think.
It depends on what he wants to do.
You present that stuff to Monty.
So we've got to wait for him to decide what he wants.
Get it to Kellin, Kellin will get it to me.
Okay.
And then we'll take a look at it.
Okay.
You, you have withdrawn what's on the agenda for tonight, and so we're, we're done with this part of it.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Petrie.
Sorry, I wasted time.
No, it was not a waste of time at all.
Nice meeting y'all, anyway.
No, it was not a waste of time.
We'll see each other again, probably.
No, right. That was not a waste of time, Mr. Petrie, at all, I appreciate it.
No, he gives us an insight of what we're looking at.
It's what we have these meetings.
Okay, well, I'm gonna say.
We have a hundred and fifty-nine counties in the state.
Yeah.
Which is about, Texas has more counties than us, but we're second in the country, by the way, the state of Georgia. So everybody learned something tonight, right?
I've got.
We're number two in the state, in the country.
Prove a little minutes. May the eighth, and I'll look over.
Let's just approve.
Say. Motion approved, we're second. Any discussion? How you doing?
Yes.
Yes. Now, hold on. You wasn't here, you didn't explain?
Yep.
Alright, so, all, so we got four.
Four, yes, and one's Spanish.
Four, yes.
Alright, anybody want to add something to us, done before we get out? Yeah, report on the right-of-way deeds from the attorney.
Okay.
Yeah, so, insurance, the employee health insurance.
On the health insurance side, I just have some preliminary information that, you know, we'd have to take a look at it, it's not ready for a public hearing or discussion on it at this point. Let me just give you some initial, you know, just some context, but it's not ready for that as of yet.
Mr. Chairman, again, I want to discuss health insurance. And I think I'm the only one sitting around this table knows what I want to discuss. It is not the report that we have in our package, I want to discuss employee health insurance. Go ahead. Okay. What we have is an analogy of the insurance that we have, and they really imply that they're gonna have to ask for an increase. Uh, in view of that, I would like that the board invite for prices from other companies to submit to us prices immediately, because July first is when we're gonna have to select the insurance company and move forward. So this is, we only have the month of June and a few, few days in this month. So my motion is that we contact other insurance companies, give them an opportunity to present to us bids on our insurance code, health insurance code.
Commissioner and the board, that work has already been done.
Great, have you seen, have you gotten any responses back?
Yes, sir, I've gotten some preliminary responses.
They might as well be preliminary.
Which I.
How many have you gotten?
We've, we've got one competitive bid to what we have right now, so I guess, from a context standpoint for, for the public, we are looking at our current insurance plan, and I think as, as we mentioned at the last meeting, ideally, from the insurance company's standpoint, they like for the claims payout to be seventy-five cents to the dollar, so for every dollar of premium, they'd like to get, they'd like to pay out only seventy-five cents, which gives them the twenty-five cent spread of a dollar for theirs. Our, our claims came in at one dollar and forty-three cents with our current provider. So for every dollar we pay in premium, they pay a dollar forty-three in, in claims. If we stay with them, our prices are gonna increase probably right at around a half a million dollars each.
Mr. Chairman, let me get back to what I'm, what I'm trying to say. That is the propaganda, the position of bargaining that insurance companies do. What I want to do is put us in a position to offer this to several other companies. Now, you say you've got one other company, who is that that is presenting and showing some interest?
Humana has, the other ones have bid, but their pricing is higher.
I understand what you're saying, okay.
So Humana has offered us an opportunity to take a look, and we have addressed an application to all of the employees.
How many more people do you have?
That's the only, that's the only company that bid, that gave us an opportunity for potential savings.
How many other companies did you contact?
The broker, the broker, we had the broker reach out to several different companies, and they were the only one who came back. I don't have a list of who all they petitioned. Uh, Glenn, is it Glenn Davis?
Yeah.
Glenn Davis is our, is our, is our broker, and so, of course, they represent a number of different companies, so they took our data, they presented it to the companies, and asked them to weigh in.
I would like for you to make contacts on your own and see what, what bid. This is the same jar that was presented to us, and it's always that way. The Blue Cross and Blue Shield that we had presented us one year with a four hundred, forty-two thousand dollar increase. Alright, the next year, they came back with the same number again. They were gonna double our insurance in two years that we had gone, and then we came in and got these people. We made our, our person that's in your position at that time made contact, and we got these people, which loaded back to right of a million dollars. So the thing I'm trying to say, that's a sales pitch that everybody puts out, what he'd like to make. But what I'd like for you to do is to contact these people, if you do it as a broker, that's fine, he'd get a piece of the pie. But you can sit here and you can contact these people and show them our worksheet, and you can get it from them employees, rather than getting it from the people we got insurance now. You see what I'm saying?
I do, yes, sir.
And then make your plea on the phone, or visit people, call in their representative, see what you can get. See, we're talking about a half a million dollars almost.
Right.
That's what I like.
Alright, yes, sir.
Okay, I agree, Commissioner, the board? I would double back, check with ACCG, and these prices are from Glenn Davis, right?
Well, the prices are from.
Invigilations.
It's from United Healthcare has, when they looked at our claims experience, has said, based upon the claims experience that we've had for you over this period of time, to stay with the program that you have right now, it's gonna cost you about one, one point five and change for that program in fiscal twenty nineteen. And they are looking at our actual experience.
The broker, though, is the same for all insurance companies.
That's what I'm saying, that is correct, that is correct.
Representing all. We need to go to a different broker and try somebody else.
Yeah, I think what the broker is doing is he's going to a variety of companies and pitching our business, because regardless of what company we go to, the broker's cut is gonna be the broker's cut. The question is, who's gonna, who's gonna offer that? Now, if you'd like for me to reach out as an individual.
Do that, do that, get, get the worker that.
Then that's a different, that's a different approach.
That's what I'm asking you to do.
From a different broker. Yeah. I mean, you know, Glenn Davis is gonna do what Glenn Davis wants. Nothing against, but anytime we, anytime we look. Yeah, anytime we look for different contracts, we need to prop some out.
See, we got the same spiel before we knocked it down, a half a million dollars right at, Mr. Chairman said twenty thirty-eight, but even three thirty-eight, or four forty-four, we still, look what we saved.
Well, you know.
Well, part of that difference is gonna be if a company is looking at your experience versus one who's not. So if we go to a man or somebody else, they aren't looking at our claims experience because it wouldn't allow them access to that.
How can you carry over an individual policy rather than a group policy? Like, on me, a broker have just me pay on my premium for me, rather than have a whole countywide group?
I don't, well, because typically a group plan is gonna be a lesser expensive one because of volume.
You got me paying this high policy premium because if somebody else had been going, when I hadn't made it, I had used it all. You see what I'm saying?
I do, I do.
He's about to offer a group, and what he did say about a group, it's gonna be cheaper than an individual.
Right, so there's, so there's reg, yeah, there's regulations around it all, but I'll take that, I'll take that under advisement.
No, do it, don't, don't take it under advisement, just do it.
Well, that's what I'm saying, you, you said you'd like me to look at other brokers, and I'll, I'll certainly do that.
Yeah, do it.
Alright, no problem, and we'll, we'll look to give you some feedback.
Individual right here, her insurance is twenty-six dollars a month through Blue Cross Blue Shield.
What kind of benefits?
Good.
Okay, alright, so I'll, I'll, I'll look at, I'll look at some options. Blue Cross, of course, is not an option, because there's a two-year moratorium, and we are still not, so they won't bid until next year, next year this time, so we'll have to work, okay, I'll do that.
Good.
Okay, very good.
Alright, good right away. You, oh, the attorney stepped out. What we going in personnel session?
Yeah, we're gonna talk about.
Yeah, how you coming on the road? I love you, I'm sorry, how you coming on the four roads that I have presented to you?
Okay, well, Mr. Bond, I'm glad I'm sitting here, so you can look at it this way. I shared this with, with Mr. Lewis, and, and I'm just gonna have to apologize to you, because obviously, I did not understand that you needed me to be doing something on those four roads. The last time we talked was at the end of one meeting, maybe a week or two, a meeting or two ago, and we talked about what we had done at Cranberry Lane, and you were gonna get me some information on a, on a road that you didn't have the, the correct name of at the time, and we were trying to remember what the, I mean, you were trying to put your finger on what the name of that road was, and since that time, the only other thing I got was an email from Mr. Lewis saying, hey, Mr. Bond wants to know about T Spots, and Mr. Bond wants to know about how you're doing on those roads, and I was like, here's the answer to the T Spots, and please tell Mr. Bond that I don't know what those four, what he's talking about in those four roads, but I, but I will pass this to you.
I'm gonna make motions tonight in reference to those.
Thank you.
Now, on the.
I need to know their names.
Okay, on the Dennis property, which is the, uh, the road off Bullard Road, the William Lane, on that one, see, we've been dealing with him for three years, he ain't gonna budge. So on that road, and, and, Mr. Clerk, if you keep, on that road, because I wanna pass it all in one motion, on that road, uh, we, we just go in and enter a, an act of taking.
Right, okay, declaration of taking, got it.
Right, and then. Right. And then whatever the normal price for it to be, we just pay that. Cause he, he, we're not gonna make any contact with him. Alright, on, uh, Cranberry, that's the one you have all of these up too. On both two people that are left, we go ahead and issue act of taking on that. And what I'm gonna, trying to say, on that road, really, the fact we already have a right of way on that road, cause they got a water line that ran down there. That water line goes by the act of taking and that makes it public. But we go this way. When I mentioned that before, people were saying, it's a private road. It's never been a private road. But
So we have all the quick land deeds except?
Two. And those two, we go ahead, the act of taking. And, and all that gets you by, could see some of the people on here. So you issue them a check on the same rate you did the rest of them. And when they get themselves together, they'll come in and find Joe Blue and Bobby Jack. They come in and pick up that money, let them split it up like they want to. The act of taking on that. Now, the other one, uh, we already have that one. So that will conclude that if you get that done, could see, I'm gonna start in that in July.
Okay.
June or July, when the weather gets sunable. That's when they work. So we're gonna move on that.
Alright.
You get that for me, cause that's been holding off four years.
And, and, and I'm authorized to, to do that.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. That's, that's my motion. My motion is authorized in the mood. Go ahead and finish that up.
I just wanna ask you one question. On Cherokee, did you ever find out who's got signed it?
Cherokee, Cherokee.
Cherokee, how, how the project? Out there off of, um, Hammerford Road.
Do what now?
Off of Hammerford.
Oh, you know.
Cherokee Estates. Ain't that one of them, bud?
That's right, Cherokee.
Cherokee Estates, out there from five schools. Did you ever find out, they went bankrupt? Did you ever find out who's got signed it?
That's right.
Wouldn't he find out?
I'll, I'll put that on the list.
They hold the water out there, hey?
And that, that is a totally different location than
Those folks can't get to the house. Can't get to the house. I'm serious.
Cherokee Heights, I'll, I'll put that on the list.
That's the very question we talked about.
They called me yesterday morning. Their daughter's a nurse. She's on call.
Wait, is it a public road, Mr. Chairman?
We don't know.
No, no. No?
It's a private road. Do we get to sign off on it? They'll sign off on it. We'll figure out who's getting signed off.
Go to the, go to the
They lost it. And the man that they lost it, the one that lost it told me three years ago, he would sign it, but he had no, you know.
Right. We might just need to condemn it or do a declaration of taking on it. Be done with it.
That's, that's your secret.
I'm not sure it costs to condemn these roads.
Well, you know, you send out the letter and then you get, uh, a commercial appraiser to come say, okay, what, what is it that we want to take? What does that worth? Alright, you file your action with the, with the Superior Court, you pay that money into court, and then the judge will, then the property owners can come in and fight it and say, that's not a fair price? Or they can just say, yeah. But once you file it in there, the judge will enter the gavel and stamp it. And now, we may have to pay more if the property owner can prove.
Wait, 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 wait now.
But we, we probably won't. But we own the property.
You told me. Didn't somebody told me? I thought, I guess, on Oak Hill, I like four signatures, ain't it correct?
Right.
That's right.
So if we condemn that, it would cost approximately ten, twelve, five, nine?
Oh, no, no.
Uh-uh.
It's gonna cost, it's gonna cost at least five to get a commercial appraiser to come out there and do that work.
I went down there last week and told them, to contact, help what I can find on Oak Hill Cemetery. That I couldn't actually tax fail to where you can't pay, ten, twelve, five dollars. This little stretch of road only gonna fit them, fit those people.
Mm-hmm.
Find these four people. They can't find where they live at. That's what they told me. Find these four people and get them to sign. But it's not right for the tax fail to where you can't pay for a five dollars on this little road running. Ain't gonna fit, probably twelve.
Now, now, sh- and, and I agree with you there. Shoot me if you must.
Yes, sir.
Shoot me if you must. But paying for right of way is something I started doing. We never paid for right of way. That is a provision of the law. Where you can put a road through your house.
You got to pay them without land.
Yeah, but you don't have to pay the price that he got to. What you do, you go to that tax digest, you see what paid them back. And you'll find, it ain't gonna be no twelve thousand dollars.
That's what he told me, now. I ain't say, there ain't no lawyer. I don't know what it gonna cost.
I like saying that here better. Um, but here's the thing. I'm not saying that the value of the property is five thousand or a penny or a nickel. What I'm saying is that the statutory procedure requires you to have a commercial appraisal done on that piece of property. And we all know that commercial appraisers charge a lot more than somebody that's appraising your residential house that you can get done for two hundred fifty or four hundred dollars.
I understand that.
I would say a minimum amount that we, to get a commercial appraiser to come and appraise this room, okay, I'm gonna say you, you need to be prepared to pay a thousand dollars.
Yeah.
And that's, that's the way I look at it. And that's why with four or five pieces of property, I say the minimum amount of money which gonna cost us is five thousand dollars. And then your attorney's gonna charge you something. The, the appraiser's gonna say, the appraiser's gonna say this piece of property is worth something, okay? So you're gonna have to pay that into the registry of court. And so that's why my budget of about five to ten to twelve thousand dollars, I wanted y'all to be prepared so that you wouldn't think, hey, we're gonna get this done for three hundred dollars and you got a bill for twelve that's paid out of the sploß funds. So that everybody knows going into it, what it's gonna be, right?
Understand that. Understand that, understand that very well. But the law that I'm talking about, see, we have used it up here several times. Eighty. Check our records.
Okay.
Check our records. And it's on, uh, Friendship Church is one. And I said Friendship Church is the name of the property. M D Durden. Was digging up the church, claimed that, and we went before the judge. Judge told us, look, before I even hear this, Mr. Durden, you, Jim Attic was his lawyer. He's down there checking this. How we went under that?
Okay.
And he told him this. You are wasting my time and yours. But if you insist on this here, we're gonna do it. He insisted. But before I went to court, I thought the contract was loose. The payers declared the property by the time for the judge, eighty. Cause that's what the law let us do. But we were trying to be, cause we never paid before in the eighties anybody when we went in the white road.
No, 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 no.
You weren't here, Mr. Chairman. Go back to the record.
I didn't have to be here. Right off of my house. My mama give this side over him right away on Follow Road. Jim Follow on the other side wouldn't give it. They paid him nineteen sixty something.
Yeah.
That's true.
You go back and you look fine.
I didn't have to be on this board. What I just told you is true.
Alright, you go back and look through our minutes. And, and what I'm trying to do, ever since we took, came in here in, in two thousand twelve, was to get a University of Georgia student to come in here and go through our records. Cause we were spending money on actions that we had gone through. And we had results in our records right now. And nobody ever would, they always would throw that fellow off. Came down here twice. We had our first attorney in two thousand. That never happened. We have handled cases here that already have been gone through court and we got the records in that, in, in our files right now. And you might all take care, go through and see what I'm talking about.
Alright, so, just so I'm clear in front of God and this crowd and myself, what, what am I supposed, am I supposed to go forward with these condemnation actions of, for Mr. Bond and on Oak Hill? Or am I not supposed to do that?
Well, I just went in for the discussion.
You're gonna take a photo of the board.
Yeah. Yeah, we're gonna take a photo of the board. But what I'm saying is this.
It's most
What I, I'm, I'm gonna make the motion now. On the roads that I'm talking about, I have laid out the process and the if somebody was gonna use another process, I'm happy with it. But on these roads, we've gone to our length and four years with people. That, that's enough. And this is our property with the Denner. So get that one, cause his family probably won't give him the leave to do anything. But they caused the problem. Cause he knew what the grievances were if he developed a piece of property. So it ain't much, it didn't, it, it's about three times wider than, two times as long as this room. It ain't about four houses, is it? So that one, go through that process on that one. And the one down here with the two people on that road. That's all on that.
Alright, Miss Kathy wrote this down for me. She's keeping.
You got that, Mr. Clerk?
Uh, I got it.
The two roads I'm talking about. Cause I'm gonna put a motion on the floor. Those two, anybody else wanna hand it, they hand it the way they want to.
I, I have it, sir.
Okay, thank you. So moving, Mr. Chairman.
So moving what? Make your motion.
Let him do whatever he got to.
I just made the
How much is that going to cost? So the, so the motion was for you to con, so for the move forward to, for the condemnation of Denner Road and Cranberry Lane Road. That's what you're asking?
Yes, that's right.
Denner Road.
Uh, uh, Denner, Denner Road.
Denner Road.
Drive. Yep.
And then Cranberry Lane, you wanna move, your motion is, is to move forward, have the attorney move forward with the condemnation of those roads.
How much it gonna cost, sir?
The two, two pieces of property on Cranberry and the one piece out there.
Did you ballpark, please?
He's not afraid of anything, do you?
I just, just, okay, just, just so that y'all will have a good idea of what, what I think it's gonna be in. I think you're looking at, for every piece of property, um, and presuming that none of this property is valuable property, right? I mean, presuming that it's either worth next to nothing or nothing, right?
Yes. Let, let me see, let me show you, let me show you what we have used.
To twenty-five hundred dollars per parcel.
Mr. Attorney, let, let me show you what we have used. And we worked with everybody. Those property owners know the rest of them there, what we're gonna pay.
Okay.
That's eight hundred seventy-five dollars per acre. And on, on, uh, Cranberry, you're not talking about a half acre there.
Or less, right?
Yeah. And where Denner is, about two acres maybe.
Now, you
That's all we talking about.
I, well, I understand that. I mean, none of this is, we're not condemning ten acres anywhere. I mean, it's, it's slices. It's forty feet of right of way. I mean, it's nothing, you know?
Look, on the Denner piece, we're talking about the whole room, which goes about twice the length of this building.
Alright.
That's all it is.
Well, let me ask you this here. If we pay them eight hundred something dollars a piece of it, and they appeal it, they got to get the appraisers to come in and sell it, and not us.
Yeah, we will already have our appraisal.
Well, I mean, why we wanna pay it if we, if we pay them that?
We got the private freighter at the front, but we'll sort of cross it.
Alright, so what you're saying is that, the, regardless of what we pay for the property, property values, whatever that is, is gonna be there.
That is the denis cost, right?
But the, the, to have the appraisers done, it's gonna cost about twenty-five hundred dollars per parcel in, in addition to your fee, which is gonna make that probably about a
No? No, I would, I'm thinking, and I'll, and we can certainly try to get as, as, as greater price as we can from a commercial appraiser. But I'm just telling y'all, like I said before, I just don't know that we can get anybody to touch it for less than a thousand dollars a piece of parcel, uh, per parcel, for, for a commercial appraisal. Then I'm just thinking, okay, we can do for sure, Oak Hill is one lawsuit. We can do Cranberry is one lawsuit. We can do Denner is one lawsuit. And there was one other piece of property we can do as one lawsuit. For every one of those, that's three hundred fifty dollars filed with it, okay? So then I'm just thinking it's gonna take me some time to put all these papers together and write the letters. So when I'm telling y'all that I think twenty-five hundred dollars per
Okay.
parcel, i- is a, is, is about as cheap as I think y'all gonna get it done. I mean, I, I'm all about being cheap, but I don't really wanna pay the appraiser out of my pocket or, I mean, I know y'all don't expect me to. Y'all just need to know what, what, what a reasonable number.
Think you can talk with the appraiser about giving you like a group rate?
That's what I'm, if I could get somebody to do it for five hundred, that, that would be a great deal of price, you know?
I mean, cause these roads gotta be reclaimed regardless. I mean, it kinda sucks, but that's the way it is.
And it's, it's a, it's a weird appraisal, right, as you know, I mean
Cause it's a, it's a slice.
Right. It'd be so much each and two appraisal, one acre piece of property, commercial, that when, when five have sold in the past three years, then, cause what is thirty feet worth of property? I mean, that's not a
Can we pay that appraisal out of sploß, huh?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
It is all about development.
I'd say move forward with the county's best interest, you know, try to, try to do something.
I said.
Muches to approve.
I, I, uh, okay, second. Where am I? Let's go. Cause I, I, I tell you, you know.
On Drummond Road and on, uh, Cranberry.
We have four of them.
Now, that's four.
Dinner, Cherokee, Cranberry Lane, Cherokee Heights and Oak Hill Cemetery.
Then you'll find out who, what they went bankrupt on. Those folks will sign that.
Alright, so it's just three?
Those people down there on Oak Hill, they've come up with four people, give them sign together. One of them was them.
Well, you and I talked about one of them who is already vehemently opposed to that.
And she ain't got no claim stock. The doctor ain't got no more claim. He don't own nothing on that boat out.
Alright, so we're gonna have to move on three, three properties then. Denner, Cranberry Lane, Oak Hill Cemetery. Those are the three?
You wanna go with Oak Hill, but I
Are you saying just the two then? Alright, you say two. Okay, that's fine. So Denner and Cranberry.
I'll give, I'll give them a little bit more time on Oak Hill. They have a lot of, a little more security than you guys have down.
Okay, very good, okay. He said wait.
Give them enough time to get them four signature. And I got Johnny, uh, Clint down there living up. Uh, at the end of the road. If they sign it, we ain't gonna pay nothing. We done had it though, Mr. Survey. And if they find who over the pump for Cherokee, they be putting up signs. Cause they gonna build it, they have the project.
Exactly. But you can't, well, with
Attorney, how?
That's medicine, son.
Question you.
Here, um, Keon said that Cherokee Heights, they'll, they'll sign if we find out. So part of that motion, I want
Final search done, figure out.
Want you to com, yeah, to compel you to figure out so that they can get it signed over.
Yeah, that's right. But we've, we've been dealing with this, you know, since you got it. Now, find out who in the world this thing. They got, at least somebody got to repay the taxes on.
There you go. Somebody paying tax. And if he isn't, great. You might worry about it.
They ain't paying tax and it'll be awful.
There you go. Go in there and pay the road ticket.
We don't pay it. We just think, what are you getting out? Alright, sir, I'm gonna let you ask the question, but I, you go ahead.
No, that's fine.
I don't know why you wanna condemn people's property, but if it's gonna cost that much, couldn't you offer the people, instead of going through the trouble of condemning and everything, couldn't you offer more money?
Well, people died out. Can't find them.
And the property in our area, they wanna, they got, my area, four thousand, five thousand dollars, they.
Alright, so we gotta vote.
I got a motion, I got a, sir. How you vote, yes?
Yes, we'll move on it.
Move on.
Yes.
I'm gonna vote them two ways.
Alright, now you go, go back to that lady, that blind lady telling you.
I know where that lady is. I fell over that.
Yeah, I know you have. You told her you was right behind her. We gonna get your road, man.
About long as men of the door, I tell them to the court house, that's gonna happen.
Nobody, even four hours on the road I'm talking about.
Nobody living on it.
Alright, let's move on.
God, I'm a little, does anybody know on Bullet Road where, where we rode it?
It's on New Bull Road. Ain't on Bull Road.
Well, they know what I'm talking about. Go in there and count the house.
Three, three foot, alright.
Okay, alright, good job, alright.
Okay, we need a second session. Old Ben's, I'll read that for you.
Oh, yeah. As you all know, the Board had voted to have the water tower cleaned out at, uh, and re, re, uh, renovated out at Academy. So I wanna circulate to you, uh, before and after. So the first page you look at is, is what it looked like before and what it looked like after they've done all the work. The washout is still remaining to be done. We've got a little bit of a valve challenge. Uh, we're gonna have, uh, a road superintendent, hopefully we've talked to you about that, uh, to go out and dig it up to determine whether or not we just need a, um, uh, a a line to, uh, to just to tap in so that we can shut off the tank without setting off service to the Academy or into the area, or what is, what is it that we need just to, to keep those costs contained? So hopefully that work will be done next week. We can get that done. And then, of course, they're gonna come tr- try it after that and add the logo to the water tower and then we'll be all set.
How much it cost to put them?
Well, what we've been told, if we go out and, and put a separate valve in there to do that, it's about fourteen thousand dollars to do that.
Okay, let me ask you a question now. This valve controls the water to go into the tank.
And can also, it can, it can shut down the, the water going to the tank so that they can clean it, but we're gonna leave the water on. And can also sh, it can, it can shut down the, the water going to the tank so that they can clean it, but we're gonna leave the water on for the merchants in the area.
If they shut the water down and clean the tank, they're gonna shut down the, the road there.
And if they do that, then EPA is gonna get involved. And we don't wanna be dealing with them.
How much does this valve cost?
Well, if we have to go and do the valve, it's gonna cost fourteen thousand, but we believe that there may be a way to just add an addition when they put the valve in, we believe they just didn't put in, in.
A bypass.
A bypass, right, in there, and so if it's just a bypass, it should be less expensive to do that.
How we moving in?
Well, uh, Mr. Thompson's gonna have somebody.
He's gonna have to dig it up and find that, he's gonna find all the lines.
Y'all dig it up?
We can dig it up, uh, but I'll, the thing, I have the problem with digging it up, uh, I'll send Alan out at the back who would dig it up. But, uh, you said, uh, next week, Mr. Jackson called me today and talked to me about it, and he wanted to put it on schedule for June eleventh.
June eleventh.
And that's what Mr. Jackson told me.
Okay, but that may be what he was able to work with.
I think that's what he was working with other people about, so I'm.
Oh, okay, alright, alright, so June eleventh, okay, alright, well, and that, we can do that?
Yes.
Okay, alright, okay.
Okay, so you wanna just take it up, then we come back, June the eleventh?
Yes, and, and, and depending on. Yeah, depending on what the value threshold is, we'll probably talk about it at the meeting im- immediately after that, so it'll probably be the second meeting of June, we'll have an answer. And then you, we can determine what you wanna do then, alright?
That it?
Uh, that's it.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, yes.
Make a motion.
Just to be for all.
All three of you.
Yeah, we got a lawyer today, so we can do all that, all of.
Uh, somebody memo, yeah.
How you vote?
Yes.
Namas?
If anybody wants to say anything before we go in there, I want to give you a chance when we come up.
Where is that, where is that park at? Where's our parking?
Henry.
This is Paul, where is that park at?
Henry.
It's up there. Propeller tank, same way it's always been.
On the road, yeah, right on the left, right, coming toward town.
Yeah, you go to Propeller Tank, take a right, like, come this way, move me right a little bit. Where it used to be before anybody stole any plane.
Just a basketball goal over there now, right? Yeah, I'll go over there, I'll go down Sunday, that's all I'll go over there. I didn't see a tennis court, there a tennis court over there? I didn't see a tennis court. I didn't see anything.
I don't think you did.
The procedure now.
I just wanna ask a question, whose responsibility is it to cut the grass at the library?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And how would I find out?
I don't know.
I think it's, I think it's the library board, but I can, I can check that out.
It's not the library board.
It is not the board. Alright, so, and you all are wondering who it should be, I.
County, foreign education, and the city's full of help. We're gonna have to go to God, I don't know.
And each one has responsibilities, and I'm not sure, that's why I was hoping that somebody got to get in touch with them.
Alright, the city, well, yeah, so county property within the city, which makes it a little bit delicate, but I'll, 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 I'll look into it. I, I will, I'll look into it. I will, I'll let you know, I'll, I'll contact those entities, and I'll start with the city. No problem.
Talk to Matt.
Anybody else?
I wanna say, I wanna compliment you, Mr. F, you gonna leave before we come out.
I'm gonna leave.
Well, yeah, I don't care what you're gonna do.
Ain't gonna ask you to do what you.
Well, speak, we gotta let you speak.
I wanna know why we don't have a park, we got a piece of land, but there's nothing on it. Everybody else has got a park, and Mr. Bond, yours is all messed up, see?
Well, I'll take care of that.
See, mine works this way, mine works on appointment. When somebody wants to have an event, then I shine it up.
Shine it up. We don't have anything, we don't have any basketball courts there.
Ain't that Mr. Burt?
Zero, zero.
We had everything, but somebody stole it, but.
Somebody stole it or did what?
Red red dog.
That's right. But what it needs to do, it is the park needs to be put over there where the people's at, not out there where the weed box.
Out there, nowhere.
Let's get a recreation budget, we ain't going to.
We're gonna find that money.
Hey, where's this?
We had one.
We do a swamp.
Yeah.
That swamp could include recreational.
Now, now.
Who's talking, school board about?
If we have, to not determine if we get no. That would be. That's right.
That would be a bit easier.
That's right.
Just like doing races.
Hold on, man, let's sit one at a time, talk. You got a good idea, get a hold of school board and see what it would take, they're not using it. They still playground equipment up.
If they don't use it for school, then they lose.
It's just a playground.
But it needs to be up there, rather than.
Put it over here at the ground screws.
That's right.
So whatever they took, ever bit of that out, we can ground screw it.
There's plenty of land back there.
Alright, anything is, anybody else, ma'am, you wanna say anything?
Nice, million dollar.
Sorry, well, since y'all were still discussing everything, I think he kinda jumped the gun cutting off y'all's recording system.
I thought we finished.
We did need to go into exact concession.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah, and we voted.
Anybody else? Alright, we're beside the call, so I hope. How you vote, yes?
Hold on, maybe, maybe again.
Make a motion.
We got, we done voted three, okay.
Let me get the chair for you.
Oh, come on, thank you, nobody, I got it, appreciate that.
I'm gonna get new things fixed whenever they can.
Alright, must've turned a week back in session, you take it from him.
Alright, um, okay, so, there's, there's, there's been the issue with the county administrator and the use of the road department facilities and equipment and supplies for what was free on, uh, in his personal vehicle that, um, took place on a Friday. I don't think it was this past Friday, I think it was the Friday before that, um, and so the Board of Commissioners, um, under the, um, employee discipline policy set out in the code, has decided to take, uh, understand that these, these actions are, are on the table to be voted on. Um, restitution representing the top of the market in the middle Georgia area for the services that were done for the, uh, county administrator of two hundred and fifty dollars. Um, that, that I, the county attorney, had to issue and write a written reprimand describing, uh, the offense, uh, and, uh, the violation. And that, uh, Mr. Lewis's, uh, employment will be, uh, remain probationary for an additional one hundred and twenty days past his current probation period. Um, and, and th- those are the actions that, uh, are authorized by the board, uh, under our employee discipline policy. It's intended to be a progressive policy, where you, um, you know, you, you try to solve problems with, with employees under a progressive system, um, and, and those are the actions that, uh, are on the table to be voted on and to be approved. Uh, if, if so, if so approved, uh, by a motion. Um, but as, as the county attorney, I was asked to look at the policy and to see what would be the violation, and what would be, uh, some of the remedies and the, um, disciplinary actions that, that, that would be proper under the circumstances, and, and all of those are, are within. I mean, you know, the, the, the Board of Commissioners has, has, there's no set penalty for any of the violations of our policy. There, there, there's suggested penalties, there, there's suggested things that they can take, um, and so there's a, there's a spectrum there that the, that the supervisor, which in this case, the supervisor of the county administrator is the Board of Commissioners directly. And, uh, and so that's, that's what's on the table to be moved and, and voted for up or down, uh, by the Board of Commissioners. I think that I have accurately set out, um, what I was asked to do, uh, before, and, and, and during. But if, but if I've misstated something, I, I would appreciate it if any one of the men here would, would correct that for me. And I obviously take no pleasure in, in making that announcement.
I thank you actively, Mr. D.
Yeah.
So move, I make the motion. Second? Let's second, wait. Alright, in discussion, how you vote, yes?
Yeah, I wanna say something.
Alright.
I represent the taxpayers of District Four, and all the calls I've got, I do not go along with it. That's not my personal opinion, that is what the taxpayers of District Four told me to say, do not go along with it.
Okay. Is it? Anybody else? How you vote, yes?
Yes.
My personal opinion. Do what, ma'am?
Yes.
My personal opinion, I hear it's wrong.
Y'all have it, that's it.
But if we had to spar over it, not, we let him go, we'd have to go back through this project and talk to which county about it, man.
I said, just the good old boys.
Do what now?
Just the good old boys.
Let's move on.
Wait a minute, now, let's see what a good old boy gonna do, what you talking about, boy?
Never changed.
What, tell me, I guess, get up there and tell me what you talking about.
Just the good old boys.
What? You heard this man said the policy, that's all we can do.
Yeah, and he says, he said that the policy, say it again, y'all listen.
What they'll say.
It's not set in stone.
It, it, the, the, the employee handbook gives the supervisor a spectrum of, of disciplines and, to take under the particular circumstances, taking into account the employment record of the employee in question, the severity of the offense, the cost to the county, um, and, and the employee's performance record, uh, as well as the intent of the policy for it to be a progressive policy. And that is that you try to rehabilitate employees that have made a mistake, uh, as opposed to always going to the maximum that you could. They have absolute discretion to decide whether they want to punish with an oral reprimand, written reprimand, suspension, all the way to termination. Those are things that the supervisor have to take in, uh, take into account. That's what the employee policy in the handbook says, and that's what I tried to communicate earlier. It is not, they were not limited in, in what action they had to take, they were not limited in what actions they could take. They had all available options to them, and, um, that's what I understand that the supervisor of this employee decided to do.
It's not cut and dry, we got discretion, that's what we decide, if you don't agree with it, I'm sorry. Alright, anything else?
When the waiting time come, you'll see who agrees with you.
Do what?
I say, when Nick waiting time, you'll see who agrees with you.
There you go, that's a Zach around, sir.
I can tell you Zach the one, but he won't be fucking for you then.
That'll be okay, that's your, that's your prerogative.
That's right.
You wanna say anything, yeah?
Nope, that's it, man.
Good, if anybody else wanna say anything, that's all we got.
What is that supposed to do, I did not just hear that.
I'll repeat it, there's a two hundred and fifty dollar restitution.
Fine, I will, I ain't buying a restitution.
Um, a, a written reprimand to be placed in Mr. Lewis's, uh, employment file, and his probationary period of employment. He'll, he'll remain a probationary, probationary employee for an additional one hundred and twenty days.
Okay, I, I, I just get here and.
I'm sorry.
So y'all are telling me that it's okay to spend taxpayer dollars at your discretion in, uh, use of services, and can get away with it.
You can get away with it.
Yes, you're getting away with it, he's getting away with it. If I went, if I was an employee and I went down there and took one penny, I would be fired.
You don't know this.
Oh, yes, I do, yes, I do, yes, I do.
We have that discretion.
Well, you use your discretion, but there's gonna be some, uh, fallout over it.
He's putting two hundred and fifty dollars.
He shouldn't have done it to start with, and it was his mama's car, not me.
That's what I told him, didn't you just hear me tell him why I go that with bad judgment? I told him when I tell you that last week, week four, I had not.
It's more than that, it's stealing.
Should've known, brother.
Your thing, your thing, that's bottom line.
Move to John, is it, no more comment? Yes, sir.
As I sit here and listen to the audience, I think every last one of us would be up in church on Sunday, and.
You wanna step up a little bit if you can?
I say, as I sit and listen to this audience, every last one of us, to include myself and probably the whole board, would be up in church on Sunday. And I believe the good book said that we ought to should forgive, we should not, just because an individual making a mistake. Because I, I, I think every last one of us sitting up in here at some time in our life has made a mistake, I know I have.
I make a mistake all the time, but if I take and grab that podium and walk out the door, you think there a bunch of them gonna lock me up, or can I take, do I?
Sir, let, let him finish, please, I mean, he's got, he's got the, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, will you take control of it, bro?
I will, I'm pleased.
And, you know, I, I, I've been in this county for seventy-five years, and there's been a lot of things done to me that I have forgiven people for doing it. I don't walk around and hold it against you because you did something to me, I try to forgive. I'm not successful all the time, but I do try, and I think that's what we should do to this individual. He's not getting away free with anything, because he has a conscience, he knows that he did wrong. So, as far as my vote for you, Ken Fowler, you got it next year.
Great, sir, oh, but that's your prerogative, whatever. I think he's gonna, you understand, anything else, what gonna happen? That's it. Had you run afire in the fire, and I spent another ten, fifteen thousand dollars, that's taxpayer money, y'all taxpayer.
For the board here, I would like to say one thing, and I would like to say this to Alex, because I was put in a very bad spot. I do believe in forgiving people, I really do, I don't wanna just condemn nobody for a mistake, I've made mistakes. Every one of us in this room has probably made mistakes.
We continue to make.
Let him talk, please.
But this, this was his first mistake, that, and, and I, and I, and like I said, I don't, I don't wanna condemn no one for one mistake. If it continues to happen over and over, then you can take it, take advantage of it.
It knows what gonna happen to anything else.
Just please, any of y'all, anybody, don't put me back in that position again. Please don't.
Alright, that it?
You're doing a good job, buddy, keep it up, if you need me, call me.
Alright.
Alright.
That's the way I think we all be, let's do it.
Y'all second? You the most gust? Alright, let's go.